I'll call the regular meeting of March 4th, 2020 to order at 7:00 PM. If you join me in pledging the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Copeland.
Here.
Tom Baylor.
Here.
Ken Jones is absent. Jeff Gard.
Here.
Melina Meyer.
Here.
Ann Schaefer.
Here.
David Allison.
Here.
And David Gleason.
Here.
That's a quorum of council.
Move to approve the agenda. Second.
Any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, the agenda is approved as submitted. Does council have any conflicts of interest or ex parte communications to share? Hearing none. Communications buy-in petitions from visitors. We don't have any guest speakers scheduled for this evening. Are there any audience comments regarding agenda items? Seeing none. We have chairpersons and representatives of boards and commissions. CCMC advisory board.
Greg Meyer, CCMC board. Let's see, first up, we've got Randall, our CEO. His contract's up in June and he's not renewing. So Helen and I and Bert are gonna try to find a replacement. And anyway, we're doing that right now. We've got about 600,000 cash in the bank. That's about 20 days' worth and it's been pretty steady since September. So it hasn't changed much and we've gotten 100,000 from the city. Been meeting with Bert at MVE about every couple of weeks. Just met with him Monday. Things are progressing. Too fast for some and not fast enough for others. But they're moving along. They've got some important meetings this week with financial company that they hired to do some business planning for them. So I think things will pick up in a couple of months, months, two months, three months. We'll see some, have some decisions to make, hopefully. But they're moving along. Let's see. We did have a little bit of issue with our lawyers. I think moving a little too fast for us and I think Helen's got that under control. So hopefully they'll slow down and wait for us to catch up. I've been making myself available at CCMC to answer questions for the staff and employees. And I do about four hours a week. So far, I've gotten no people asking me any questions. So I don't know if that's good or bad, but we're available for any questions and concerns they have. And our x-ray machine is down and we're currently getting it fixed and that's gonna be about 10 grand. And we're having some issues with our elevator. But they've got a dumbwaiter, so they're just using stairs and a dumbwaiter. That's gonna be about 44,000 to fix. So we're gonna try to put it off. They're getting by. So there's no complaints from staff yet, so. That's about all I've got, unless you guys got some questions.
Any questions, council? Councilman Baylor?
Yeah, not that I, any exception to it, but I'm surprised you said Bert was included in hiring the CFO though.
They had the board and Randall and I think we've all kinda wanted to see if they had someone in mind, if there's gonna be a transition, if they've got someone long-term that they wanted to try to fit into that position. Just take a look at it, anyway. Other than that, we've got some hiring companies who'll hire someone short-term, six months, eight months.
And then 10,000 for the x-ray machine, we're gonna get that fixed?
Yeah, it's being fixed right now.
Why not fix the elevator? It seemed like.
44,000 to fix it. Couple hundred thousand for a new one.
But 44,000 would fix it, make it safe and operational?
Hopefully. Then they'd have to bring it up to code, too. So 44 is the first estimate they have. Yeah, we're just gonna go a little bit and see. See how things are progressing and see how our cash does. He said no one's complaining. They have a dumbwaiter, so they're bringing stuff up and down and just using the stairs. And then some of the patients just are driving downstairs and using the lower entrance instead of the upper one. He says they're getting around it, so. If you guys hear some complaints, let me know. I am making myself available and no one's saying anything, so I'll try to stay on top of it, though.
So I'm still catching up on things, but are we all? What's the status with the PERS payments? I know we paid the big things so we could get into the system. Are we in the system, making the payments now every month? Everyone's covered?
Yep.
Okay.
All up to speed, all good with them?
Great, thank you.
All good.
Any other questions, council? Okay, thank you, Greg.
Thanks, Greg.
School board.
Good evening, Alex Russel, Superintendent of Schools. It's been a while since I've been here. Nice to see you all in this, in this setting again. I heard tonight was a meeting of handouts, so I hope you'll indulge me for just a couple of minutes.
One sec, pass it around, I guess.
So the first document there is a letter that we had sent out to the community members today. We posted it on our Facebook pages and it's in reference to the COVID-19 or the coronavirus. I'm just letting folks know that we're obviously aware that this is happening in the Lower 48 and it has yet to make its way to Alaska. But in the meantime, we are looking at CDC's, the Center for Disease Control's, website on a regular basis. We're touching bases with our local EMO group as well as clinics and service providers, healthcare providers here in Cordova. Just prepping for the eventuality that likely will come our way at some point in the near future. Really, from what we can gather, and you all probably have seen Department of Health and Social Service and CDC's websites, on some preventative measures of washing hands regularly and taking care to mind how close you are to people who may be sick. And those are really everyday practices that we have already established in the schools, especially in the elementary schools where we have a little bit more say when kids wash their hands and how they're washing them and so forth. So we just wanted to let the community know that we are prepared and are doing some preventative measures in advance. So again, just a little communication that was sent out. The second document that you have here is, and you've heard me mention this before, but we're in the final stages, probably the last week or so, in the development of our strategic plan or what we're referring to as our strategic vision. And this is a graphical representation of the plan and the core elements or sort of the foundational pillars of the plan. And everything that you see here, at least in writing, has come from the community, our community educational stakeholders. So that includes our parents and families as well as our students and our staff. So if you can, I won't go through all of it, of course, but if you read sort of that subheading underneath the title, "We will know we have achieved our highest expectations when," and draw your eye to the larger yellow circles, so you can almost read those as sentences. So "We'll achieve our highest expectations when students are prepared with permanent skills, when our community is engaged, when healthy environments are nurtured," and so forth. And the bulleted items that are around those larger yellow circles, those are kind of our subthemes. Those are areas that we'll focus on as it relates to really implementing our vision and so forth. And then the items that you see on the notebook-looking paper, those are action steps that are associated with those particular subthemes or those pillars. And this is, the idea behind a visual representation is really to engage the community and allow for our plan to be accessible. And where people can actually see, literally see, where they might fit into the plan. Operationally, we have a more traditional-looking strategic plan document that the administration will use to implement a lot of these action steps and have associated timelines and resources and so forth. But again, once this is finalized in the upcoming weeks, we will print larger, poster-size plans and pass them out around town. And hopefully, people can put them in their storefront windows or, you know, in various businesses and other places around town. And then the final stage of this will, this will be digitized and it'll be interactive online. So a person could go to our website and click on one of these images or a phrase within the plan. And there might be a 30-second soundbite or video snippet of a student talking about what it looks like to learn permanent skills in the Cordova School District and so forth. So lots of time and input and energy has gone into the plan from the community. I think it really was an engaging process over really a couple of year period. And so we're real excited to be able to roll that out, hopefully, pretty soon. Couple of other things, I guess. Monday, March 9th, we'll be having our regular school board meeting. Typically, we have those on the second Wednesday of the month, but due to some scheduling of availability of our school board, rather than putting it off until after regional basketball's leading directly into spring break and rather than pushing that off to the end of the month or not having a meeting at all in March, we've decided to hold that a couple of days before our regular scheduled meeting. This weekend is homecoming weekend at the school. So we've got teams from Glen Allen, basketball teams from Glen Allen, coming. And there are events. I hear that if you're a graduate and wear your Cordova gear or garb, you get in free, free admission Friday night. And Friday night is also senior night. And that's a time in which all of the graduating seniors are recognized with their parents or their family members. Look forward to a good weekend of events and I'll take any questions if you have any.
I heard Pete, I mean, it might be a little bit old news, but Pete got elected to the National School Board? That's kind of exciting. Is that the first time for a Cordova person?
I think it is, yeah. He's been elected to sit on the Board of Directors for the National School Board Association. And he was serving as a regional rep for kind of the Northwest portion of the country. But yeah, he's now a member of the National School Board Association Board of Directors. So it is a great accomplishment and it's certainly a good recognition for Cordova.
Cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, cool.
Questions, council? Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Alex.
We don't have our student council, new student council rep with us tonight, so we have no items on the consent calendar. Next item's minutes of the regular meeting of February 19th.
Move to approve? Second.
A motion and a second to approve. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Okay, they'll stand as submitted. We don't have any bids to consider. Mayor's report, I've been awful busy and didn't submit a written report. I was in Washington DC for energy meetings last week and was able to meet with all three of our congressional delegations offices, talk to energy issues, but also Rain Highway System and Fisheries and made connections with all the key staff there. And Helen and I are gonna be participating in a call with Valdez Friday, just kind of talking around port authority and maybe some options. And also, I'll be hopefully meeting with Alex soon, but we've had some contact from the Northern Forum, which is an Arctic forum. I think it was actually originally founded by Governor Hickel. But there's interest in a delegation from Russia, of Russian students to come and visit and engage around ecological issues. And Science Center is pretty excited about it. And we'll see if we can arrange that for next year, so. But that's all I have for now, unless there's questions. I did copy a letter of support that I just drafted right before the meeting for Tom Carpenter, who had appointed for the Board of Fish this week. And I made Bitney aware of it, so he can work it a little bit. But I think Tom would be a good choice, given the breadth of his experience. And if there's no objection, I'll go ahead and send those letters out after the meeting tonight to John Moeller and Chief of Staff Ben Stevens, because they're apparently gonna consider those this week, end of this week, so. Prince William Sound hasn't had a representative on Board of Fish from any of our communities in almost 40 years. And we're the fastest-growing, frankly, commercial and sport fishing region in the state. And between Cordova and Valdez, together we rank in the top 10 seafood ports in the country and are third largest and knocking on the door, second largest at times in Alaska. So I think it's appropriate that there's a Prince William Sound seat on the board.
I do have a question.
Councilman Baylor, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so this has more to do with the last meeting we had.
Yeah.
And if you don't have the answer now, that's fine, but we've kind of changed our pending agenda thing. So it was more on procedure. In the past, when I was involved in planning zoning and on council for almost 15 years, if you had an agenda item before the council, in particular the last meeting, we had a gentleman that wanted to purchase land. It used to be we gave him the option of talking their three minutes or when that came on the agenda, where they could come forward, say their piece, and then they would usually stay there and we would discuss. And if we had any questions, we could ask them. And somehow, we've gotten away from that and there must be a reason. But I know it worked very well for years. And I remember former Mayor's Klander and Joyce and myself when I ran planning zoning, we would actually tell the applicant, you know, if you want to wait and come up, then you're not under that three-minute rule. You can relax a little bit and give us a better proposal. So I don't know why that changed or where that changed, but maybe you can get with me later or somebody knows why. But I think we should think about going back to that. I think coming in front of this body is nerve-wracking for people and the more you can put them at ease and let them discuss it. And most of the time, we end up asking them to come back anyway to clear up some questions. But it's stressful for people to come up. And then you think three minutes is a long time and it was like bam 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 and you go back and oh, I forgot to say this, I forgot to say that. So I don't know, just throwing it out there. I don't know how we would put that on for discussion or what we would do with that, but I thought it would make better.
Yeah, I'll think about it a little bit. I'm just kind of thinking about if.
Why it got changed? It got changed from the time I got off and like a year later, all of a sudden, it was like, no, can't do that.
Okay. Any questions on my report? Okay, I'll try to flesh out some of last week's items on next meeting's report, so. City manager's report.
Just want to follow up. Coronavirus, the city is part of a team of folks around the community, from the hospital to the school and others, that is involved in kind of coming up with a citywide response. So I think everyone should feel reasonably comfortable that we're on it, if you will, when and if it does happen to hit our community. So that is something, we'll just keep you posted on that as things come up. But right now, we're following the state protocol, the CDC protocols, and just kind of trying to keep everyone aware of what's happening, make sure everyone personally is responsible for their own health and how they participate in the community if they're ill. So that's that. I hope all of you saw the ferry schedule. It's out. It's really lovely, given what we were looking at before. We do have a late April ferry to allow the spill drill folks to come in. We have a ferry running for the shorebird festival and we have ferries running that will help bring the fleet and their families into town before the first Copper River opener, so. And then there's an ongoing schedule over the summer. So I think all of everyone's advocacy and efforts did make a difference and I'm reasonably comfortable that we have something that works for our community. We'll, of course, keep the pressure on going into next fall and winter so that we have some kind of service. But right at the moment, I believe the ferry system did hear us and we're reasonably covered. So that's good news. I did put in front of all of you the census information. We need to be very committed to getting, making sure everyone in the community participates in this. And so we are getting the word out and I hope all of you will share the word as well. The census will hit our mailboxes. They're encouraging folks to go online and fill it out. That online opportunity will open on March 12th. We have a little mini-grant from the census to do an event here. We're gonna work with the library to make sure that the computers are open and that there's access for folks to come down and fill out their census. But participation will drive what kind of resources we have for the next 10 years. So it's really, really, really important that we communicate that. So just sharing a little information. We're gonna put stuff in the newspaper, already have for this coming one, our new city. Front desk gal is a language expert and she translated a communication into Tagalog. And so that's in the newspaper. So we're really, really trying to do some good outreach and we'll be working with the tribe and the school district and the hospital and others to make sure everyone feels comfortable participating. Let's see, I want to move on to finance director report. Dean, would you be good to come up? Dean is in town for the week. We are interviewing a candidate for the financial director position this coming weekend and we'll keep you posted on how that goes. But in the meantime, Dean is our intrepid guru and.
He's almost done?
He might be almost done. We'll keep our hooks into him somehow, but he has a financial report, which is, I believe, all of you received, but at the very least, he'll go over the details.
So I've got the bank recs caught up through February, so I got this done today. Seem to be losing my voice, don't know what you're talking about here. We do have the audit scheduled for the weeks of June 22nd and then June 29th. So they're that, so we're working towards getting everything set up for them. We've already started sending the auditors a bunch of information to their upload site, getting that done. So we should be ready when they get here. I wanted to point out that the new fish tax is supposed to be in by the end of this month. We have some accounts created within the Harbor Reserve Fund, so we're not gonna mix them with their current reserves, but there's another account we're putting in there to keep these monies separated. Since the bond, when it was passed, required these monies to be used for debt service or, as I say here, facility improvements, repairs, maintenance, including debt service. So we're trying to keep those separated. What this will require each year at budget time, they'll have to make it included in their budget to take money out of here to pay the debt service or if they have a project that's authorized, to move it out. So it'll be locked up unless there's a budget limit to pull it out of this account. So that's where it's going. The sales tax folks are sending out notes and trying to remind people that this is due. I think they've put it in the last couple of, what's that, the Cordova newsletter? Yeah, they've had it in there. It's going, the one that's going out this week, another notice, just to remind people that this is out there. Don't forget to file. You know, what we don't want to do is have nobody file and then go out and then collect and then put penalties and stuff on it. We just want to recommend file, so you can see where we're at. This is kind of, part of this is the same report you've seen before. I put the, here's the budget expense report for the first couple of months of the year, so you can see where we are. Part of it is just the general fund, part of it is the city in total. I've put the cash report in. I do want to point out that if you noticed, the general fund now has $156,000 in cash. So next month, they'll start going negative for the year until we bring in our big money in July and August. So that's where we need to keep working on that, getting a better reserve at the end of the year, so we don't get to this point. And then I just, I put the mark-to-market paper in here for the UBS accounts, just so we can see. January, we jumped up 50,000, but with that one bad week in February, it dropped off a little over 250,000, so. But I think the next day, market jumped up and I didn't check to see where it's at today, so. But as of the end of February, it was down 243,000 from where it was December. And if you've got money in the market yourself, you probably saw the same kind of drops in your own personal stuff. So this is not surprising, but I just wanted to put it out here for you. I'm sure it jumped up a bunch the next day. So it'll look better at the end of this month. I did want to point out, page two, I kind of tried to put a comparison to last year. And if you compare this year to last year, you, the available cash in the repurchase, it's a top there. You do have more available cash than there was last year. And the general fund's actually better than it was last year. This time last year, it was already a negative 371,000. So it's close to $500,000 better than it was last year. Still not good, not perfect, but it's getting there. So we've showed improvement, so that's good. The enterprise funds showed a little bit difference from what they're at. And then I put down some projected or some recommended reserve numbers. And this is based on the current 2020 budget. So are there any questions?
Councilman Baylor?
I was just gonna say, I wanted to add that Dean and I are both making sure that every department head has this document at the end of every month and they can track their own performance. So we're committed to making sure we don't go over budget. And we have admonished, we're, we haven't pulled out a whip yet, but we're definitely.
It was close at the last meeting.
Yeah. So we will, we are meeting now the day after council meeting and communicating any, anything that comes up here to department heads. And then Dean is sharing all this financial information and just making sure everyone is tracking properly. Yeah.
Councilman Baylor, then Meyer.
Dean, we actually have it on a pending agenda, the lease payments. I believe when we did the audit, there was actually a note in there that lease payments for property are supposed to go into the general fund or the permanent fund. And we actually have that on there. We haven't got the answer to that question?
That lease payments?
Well, when we sell a piece of property.
When you sell a piece of property, that goes into the permanent fund.
Okay, so as we sell a piece of property, we're making payments for two years and then they've got substantial completion, that comes off the purchase price, right? So in other words, that money should go into the permanent fund. Mr. Romehill's purchased this, he's got like a 10-year lease, so.
The one, the old library one?
Yes. And when we sold that, we actually made a resolution that that money would go back into the permanent fund because we drew out a million dollars to pay down on this building. So I'm just curious, are those payments going where they're supposed to be going?
I will have to look. It was written up as a long-term lease, you know.
Lease with purchase?
Yeah, I just saw the lease, so it's probably going into lease payments is where he's got it budgeted. So I'd have to check to see if those are going back yet. I know if you sell a piece of property, like you sold that property to the Science Center.
Right.
Well, that 50,000 goes, should, I believe, went back into the permanent fund.
Yeah, I think, okay, that's good. I think the gray area, though, is if the Science Center was gonna spend, give this $10,000 for the next five years, are you taking that $10,000 and putting it into the general fund or is it going into the permanent fund? Because it's still a sale, it's a lease with option to buy and they are gonna buy it. And those monies come off the purchase price.
I'd have to look.
Okay. And then maybe that's, once we know, maybe that's a discussion for council is where we want that money to go. But I do remember that. But I do remember that specifically when we sold that, the old library, that those payments were to go back to help pay back down the million dollars we drew out for here. And it's on our pending agenda, so hopefully we can get that resolved at some point.
I'll check the resume and see what it said. I'm thinking it's going into lease revenue.
Counselman Meyer.
Yeah, I had a question about your recommended cash reserves on the second page. So if we did the three months reserve, what account or where do you see that that has to equal, like the available cash repurchase account and the general fund or you recommend?
The bottom one is the general fund, where you're seeing that 156,000, that's kind of what should be in there, which gives you a reserve to pay for a few months of payments if something were to happen. So that 2.8 million should be in that general fund line, which is where the 156,000 is. The other one's an overall for just kind of the total budget. And if you, truth be known, you really are meeting that one pretty close where you're at now. Where's my number? Because right now, in your sweep account, you've got 3.6 million. So you've got somewhere between two and three months on there. And that's overall. But the general fund one, it's the one that's way off.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify which count you.
Yeah, you know, I still want to emphasize, you have plenty of money for operating cash. You know, your day-to-day, it's not like tomorrow, we're going to start bouncing checks. There's lots of, you have the operating cash. It's just where it's located. When you look at your spread, it's just in different places. So Peter's borrowing from Paul today until money comes in for Peter. You know, it's, it's all there. So operating-wise, you've got money. It's just not in the right, in some of the right places. And that's what Helen's working on.
Counselman Baylor?
So Helen, I guess, how are we doing on the, I just got this kind of look for it, but on our snow removal budget? I know we're buying a street sweeper, and I think, if I remember correctly, we were going to be using some of this saved money to help purchase that. Are we draining that excess?
We are definitely spending money, more money on snow removal than we anticipated. We are keeping that, that expense line in a separate account so that we can realize what it looks like, so that we can decide whether we want to plan for these kinds of big snow events or not in the future, or a partial snow event. It's two months in. I can honestly say the sweeper has been purchased, and we may find ourselves in a little bit of a sticky, wicked issue. But I will be able to report on that later, not now.
Counselman Gleason?
I was just curious, did the state use our equipment out at the airport?
Yes.
Did they cough up anything for that?
We are having a conversation about what that might be, so, yeah.
Hopefully that will help.
Yeah, so this, what happened is that the state equipment was broken down, and they weren't able to get the airport plowed during one of the big snow days, several of them. Airport was closed, wasn't going to be able to reopen without our assistance. So we drove our graders and our plows and whatever else, not heavy equipment out there, and got the airport open. So DOT State was using our resources to make it possible to get that, both the highway out there and the airport itself, open.
And that was appreciated. I think the mayor and other councilmen were stuck in anchors.
And many others, too. I think there's an understanding that we, we help each other where possible, so.
Any more questions for Dean? Jeff, online, you have any questions? Okay, thank you. Any questions for Helen for the manager's report?
I did have one more thing to add. The First Alaskans Institute, and Jeff, I will make sure you get this, but I did meet, and Alina has been working very hard on getting us the training, the governance and protocols training. And there are some dates that are proposed for spring that actually are maybe difficult given the fishing seasons that many people are involved in. These are their dates that are available in the spring, but they certainly could do the training in the fall. So I want you to look at the brochure and then look at the dates, and I will send out a little e-notice to you all and say, please, check your calendars, see if any of these dates could possibly work in. And if not, we'll advocate for some fall dates after the fishing season's over. This training is a day and a half. It starts on a Friday evening with working dinner and a full-day Saturday session. So just so you understand what the commitment it will be, it's a, it's a really thorough and just a really great training from all reports. So I think we'll really benefit from it. But we just have to find a date that will work for everybody. And I don't know, Malina, if you have anything else you want to add?
No, just kind of what we said, it might be tough with the, I think the gill nutters are the main ones that we need to hear from.
Yeah. So these dates may not work, but we will continue to look for something in the fall if this doesn't look possible.
If it's a Friday and a Saturday, it'll work just fine. We fish Monday during the day and Thursday during the day. That's it.
Yep.
And it's only during, it's two 12s.
Yeah, so.
Those will work.
Yeah, great. So I'll just get in touch with everyone. You'll expect an email from me. But in the meantime, if you just look at your calendars and double-check those dates and see how they fit. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Helen.
Before we go to the clerks' report, so it sounds like with the June audit process starting, we might have audited financials by budget time, kind of September, Octoberish?
Yes, and CCMC is working on their audits earlier than ours. So we'll be able to integrate that in and not have any kind of a wait, so.
Seems like that'll be a first in quite a while, so thank you. And then you reminded me, Councilman Baylor, that the Coast Guard event that was counseled. So I've been working with the command, and we're looking at the blessing of the fleet the first or second week of May to coordinate that kind of celebration of Cordova's decision. Clerks' report.
So we had an election yesterday. I think I sent out information to the news sources and council and all the candidates. But there was only really one race for council seat B with the outstanding ballots for absentee. There's as many as 63 left to count. The four questioned ballots from yesterday will not be counted, after I did a little bit of research. So we will do that next Wednesday at 9:00 in the morning. I hope to be able to certify that night. We have, we're meeting, we're going to talk at Pending Agenda. We're meeting that night with, a joint meeting with Harbor Commission. So hopefully, we can just do a quickie little special meeting before that and get the election certified since you'll all be here anyway versus the option of having it the next day at noon. So be ready to answer that at Pending Agenda. And thank you for cleaning Pending Agenda last time also, that was great. That's all I have to report. I can answer questions.
Any questions, council? Okay, seeing none, we have correspondence. Any comments? Counselman Gleason?
I'd just make a comment on item 10, which is the lease in Double Bay. I spoke to the Forest Service and ADF and G, and both of those agencies, Forest Service flat-out said they don't want it, and ADF and G said they had concerns about it, which I, they didn't get into that exactly what they were, but neither one of them were positive. We should stay vigilant on this if it makes it to the public comment phase, because that's, as I said before, it takes up the whole bay.
Counselman Baylor?
Yeah, I guess I'd agree. I mean, we're all for trying to develop fisheries, but I think this is the wrong place to have this, so I would recommend we stay on top of it, too.
Other comments on correspondence? Okay, hearing none. We don't have any ordinances or resolutions or unfinished business. Next item is council discussion of RFP for legal representation, which may be discussed in executive session as a matter of which immediate knowledge of which would clearly have an adverse effect upon the finances of the government, specifically the RFP for legal services. Counselman Allison?
Yeah, I'm not sure what kind of details the manager is looking for, whether or not we need to get into executive session, but public knowledge, information, you go back over the 20 years we've had the attorney we've got or however long it's been, and look at the public court cases that have gone on, and Cordova hasn't fared very well in most of those. We continually have problems with our lease and land sales things, and every time we get a solution from our attorneys, turns out to be a bad solution. For example, they told us specifically that, I was not on the council at the time, but I was very much involved in land negotiations, and they, the city was told that they would be able to take property back if somebody didn't do what their deed of trust said. Five years later, somebody doesn't want to do their deed of trust and says, we can just pay a $20,000 fine. The council was like, we didn't hear about that before. Well, that's what it was. They paid a $20,000 fine and can now do whatever they want to with their, their property. So we switched back to the lease thing. But in the meantime, we've got eight or 10 deals out there with these deeds of trust, and I don't think there's that many left at this point in time. But, but it's just a big fiasco. They tell us, you know, we've got problems with our code that we can fix for $50,000 a section. Well, who wrote 99% of that code? It's there, those same attorneys that say now they want to charge us $50,000 to change them all to make them, make them current. So anyway, we just, I don't think we've got good advice over the years. And if we want to get into any more specific details, happy to do that, but I don't want to get into any, you know, I don't want to put the city in, in legal trouble by saying something that I shouldn't in open session, so. Those are my thoughts at this point in time. I'd just like to get an RFP out for, and see what, what other places might have to offer. That doesn't necessarily mean that they can't put in a proposal like they did the last time, three or four, four years ago, I think is when they did that, so. I think it's worth taking a look at. We spend enough money on attorneys, as you can see by the hand out there, that we should be getting good service, so.
Counselman Baylor?
Yeah, I guess if we're, if, you know, if we always want to think about just doing an RFP, but if staff would like a little more input of our thoughts on this, I think it'd be good to go in executive session if they want more information. So I don't feel comfortable saying too much more than what Counselman Allison said, you know, in open session.
Further discussion, council?
I think we did have executive session on the agenda. I think it would be, in your opinion, would be helpful for you to ask modest questions? I think we should, I would recommend, I'll make a motion to go into executive session. Is there a reason?
Need a second?
It says it.
It's right there on number seven.
Okay, do you want to wait until we get to that item, Councilman Baylor?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were there.
We just had the pending agenda in between. We could go through that, then, then when we clear the room, we can all have conducted the business. That's all right. So we can just hold off on the executive session portion of item 15, so. So I didn't hear any other further discussion in the open discussion about attorney. So pending agenda, calendar, elected appointed officials list, page 52. I did get a letter of interest from Councilman Beadle that came in after the packet deadline to re-up on the RCAC board. And I think where I left that with councils, we'd like to go out and solicit interest. We've had a representative on there for four or five terms now. Doesn't mean we'll change, but it's just good, I think, to give the public an opportunity to serve on that board periodically, so. Any other pending agenda items?
When I listened to, you know, when I did the minutes of the last meeting, I thought it was you guys were going to solicit interest, because I didn't put any kind of an ad out or anything.
Okay.
And we're kind of supposed to do it at the next meeting. Because they need it by March 30th.
All right.
So we have one letter.
So those need to be in by Wednesday before the next regular meeting.
Sure. So you, are you going to solicit interest or am I going to advertise for interest?
Like to advertise, I think. There's no objection from council. It's a fairly important seat, so. And I did have a meeting of mayor's boards and commissions, and Robert did come to that meeting to kind of give an update, but I think it's more appropriate, ask Councilman Baylor, as your PISWAC representative and CCMC and whatnot, to get at least like a periodic, like a quarterly report to council. So I'm going to try to implement that, that you get a periodic report on RCAC, so concise.
And are you guys good with 5:45 PM next Wednesday, just to certify the election? Yes? And if you see, we had said that we were going to meet jointly with school board twice a year, and I kind of picked November and April. So April 1st, before the council meeting here. Are you good with that? Are you good with that, Alex?
I'm sorry, which date?
April 1st. 6:00 PM work session with school. Does anybody want to come up with any specific things or, because it's, I mean, we're going to fill an hour, do we have anything? All right, you guys can think about that if we tentatively schedule it.
Will, will April 1st be getting closer to their budget process?
Yes, that's what I was going to ask, is just kind of a budget summary at least, so that at the forward-looking to the July budget cycle.
I think that was the idea, once before their budget and once before our budget.
I think that makes sense.
All right, and so next Wednesday is the harbor, joint harbor commission meeting, so 5:45, be right before that. All right. Next item is the audience participation. Any audience comments? Seeing none, council comments? I'll start online. Councilman Gard?
No comment. Thanks, everybody.
Hey, Councilman Baylor?
Yeah, I don't know the, you know, I know the hospital's kind of strapped. The elevator concerns me. I don't know what their program is there, but I know the, what little I know about, I think the food is prepared downstairs, it has to come upstairs. If people are having to leave the building and come around, you know, that opens the door for slips, strips and falls and puts people's harms way. I'm not so sure that, I think we probably should look at getting that elevator fixed. I don't, I think if it was a month or something, that'd be fine, but if this is going to be a long-term thing with people going outside the building or going upstairs carrying things, you just kind of open the door to somebody getting hurt or something happening. That being said, like I said, I'm not over there, but just from this elevation, I think they should consider fixing that elevator.
Hey, Councilman Schaefer?
Thanks to everyone who came out and voted yesterday and leading up to yesterday.
Counselman Gleason?
Thank you, Dean. Fine work, as usual. And thank you, Greg, for everything you're doing on your end there. And thanks, everybody else. Alex, thanks for coming. Alex, thanks for coming.
Councilman Allison?
No comment, thank you.
Councilman Meyer?
Yeah, thanks, everyone, for coming out and everyone who voted yesterday and also who ran and decided to volunteer their times to the different boards and commissions that we have. So thanks, everyone.
Okay, next item is executive session. Councilman Baylor?
Under which number should we go?
17 is listed there.
Yeah, finances.
Oh, okay, thank you. Yeah, I moved to go into executive session, subjects which may be considered are, are matters of immediate knowledge of which would clearly have an adverse effect upon the finances of the government, specifically RFP for legal services.
Have my motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll go into executive session and give a moment to clear the room.